Public meeting of the leadership school board to work on the page 28 and rise into the question.
I bid to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Everyone is here who are superintendents. Thank you for meeting here. We will move forward with the question. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Oh.
None.
Thank you.
Consideration of the minutes and to gain a motion to approve the minutes.
Now, of the Woodrow School Board meeting of March 6, 2024, as written.
So moved.
Excuse me, I have suggested amendments to the minutes from March 6. Okay, I'll give those. If you will turn to page 5 under public comments. Okay. Um, we have some inaccurate and incomplete information here. When parents take the time to come to the school board meetings, I think it's important that we articulate the specifics of what they say. So I felt like that was giving rather cursory attention. So the first line is sequence. It has not one section. Um, we have a parent suggests that the board should discuss a spring parent teacher conferences at a future meeting. Actually, what that was, I suggested that the parent expressed a strong desire that spring conferences be reinstated. More than one parent expressed a strong desire that those conferences be reinstated. Um, let me see. Two. Um, so parents also, we have another parent asked about publicizing board workshops. To be more specific, parents report that they were not given information about budget workshops during the course of the meeting. Parents looked that up and did not find it. They reported they were not given information about budget workshops. Okay, also, parents discussed survey, desire for survey, and need for regular surveys. So those were three things that I saw missing in this section.
Uh, thank you, Monica. We had stated, and I can go back and find it, the four budget workshops are on there on the schedule of the school board meetings. Uh, the other stuff. What were them?
Well, this is, this is highly unusual. These are not intended to be a newspaper report. They're a cursory overview of what's there. So if it's of board pleasure, then they can be amended. The motion is as written with corrections. And if you direct me to add Ms. McGlaughlin's comments in there, I will. But I, I'm, I would not do it unless and told I have to.
Okay, any discussion for the board?
I'll just reiterate that I think it is very important that when parents take the time to attend the meetings and the time to speak in the meetings, that their comments be actively reflected in our minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I think I would like the comments to stay as written. Perhaps the edit of, if you change the name to parents, it seems very.
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah, so I think that's a fine, a fine edit. Um, I support absolutely parents coming, and that's wonderful. Um, I don't think this misrepresents the conversation at all. Oh, we have the videos.
Thank you, Monica. Any other board comments?
Um, I, I feel that it wouldn't hurt just to add a brief outline of what was brought and added. And I just don't see why, um, that it's not in there. I mean, it would be nice if we're keeping accurate record.
Thank you, Ivy.
Yeah, I think it's setting precedent, and I don't think it's inaccurate. I think if you want more detail, you could go find it somewhere else. But I think, um, to Jim's point, it's a, the minutes, we can't, if you start including that at a granular level, then you must include it for everything at the granular level. Because otherwise, you're going to be missing things. So it's sort of like an all or nothing type of piece. So what the minutes represent is an overview. Because if you choose to say everything was like that said in one spot, then we got to do it in another spot, and then there are no longer minutes. They're a dictation of the meeting, which we actually have, which people can then go see. So that is, and that's, I think, published enough. You think people know that the records are there? That if they wanted to find out in detail what was discussed, they could go watch the video, and then they could follow up and see like really what the parents concerned was. So I think, you know, we just really have to be careful because you, that's, you know, if you dive deep in one area, you have to dive, otherwise you are misrepresenting. You can't just do one in detail and then use two, you know, superficial another. Because that is then misrepresenting the meeting.
Okay, Ivy?
I just want to clarify about that. I didn't say anything about inaccurate. I really showed support that it would be nice to reflect and reflect on.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
I respectfully, Christopher, I'm asking for three lines to accurately reflect. And I think very few people actually sit and watch the board meetings. And this is a document that is in the public, that is here for a reason. So people can take a quick look and really see. So when there are omissions, it is inaccurate.
Thank you, Katyn. Yeah, so I guess, um, I guess I'm not, I'm not against, you know, like seeing those things in there, or what Catherine just said, it's going to be a major problem. We're going to start writing a narrative, almost close to a small book after every meeting, and that would just get out of control. Um, and after review, one section, you have to do all. And so I think that that's the issue with going into actual minutes.
Any other board comments? Can we just take a straw vote as far as who believes there should be a correction added? So in favor? Two, and as is? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Okay, we got a vote. Okay, thank you. We're going to step back. And we have a motion to second. We have a board vote for the meeting minutes as is. Okay. Three, zero. Thank you.
Three, eight, seven.
Oh, opposed or abstained? Opposed, abstained.
I agree.
Yeah. Moving on to the public comment section. And just so, I'll give my little spiel here. Um, the board welcomes the public to speak. At this time, we'll start with those who are in the room, followed by those who may have been on Zoom who wish to speak. As a reminder, constructive comments and suggestions and questions are always welcome and given consideration of the board. Personal matters or complaints about a person will not be considered in a public meeting, but will be referred through established provision procedures. Members of the board and superintendent may ask questions, but are expected to refrain from arguing or debating issues. Call speakers, enter address, and ask questions through the chair. And we'll ask that each person gets up for a debate themselves first.
My name is Seth O'Phee, and I've been a parent in this district for 17 years. 10 years ago, I worked with Rensselaer School of State. Seven years ago, I worked with Rensselaer 19th School of State. Now, where the bond path somewhere between 60 and 111. During this time, our Rensselaer class had numbered in the 50s and 60s, and now I understand it to be 30. During this time in the district, I remember finally volunteering in the district, tripping over all the other volunteers as we went into the office to get our badges and headed into classrooms to help during math and during reading. I would attribute the sense of this reluctance to be a part of the lack of communication, lack of attempts to gauge parents and allow parents to have a voice as far as what we need to say. At the school board meeting two weeks ago, someone in the audience was advising against having a section of the survey to allow parents to write in comments. This has been a practice that I feel of the administration and previous boards to diminish, to diminish parents' voices. Additionally, usually there are video recorded minutes of school board meetings, as we were referencing on the school board's website. Many parents have spoken the last few meetings. The February 7th board recorded minutes weren't on the website. They were taken down. Now, we'll have video recording of minutes at these meetings. On January 3rd, you can go to YouTube or rambler productions and find them. I feel that this is against censoring parents. In looking at neighboring districts, many have given the parents a comprehensive survey. So instead of a survey about remote days, we simply were wanting an all-consuming survey. We have 64 parents, five officials within the last middle week. Some officials based, three parents of children in different school sites, petition asking for a comprehensive parent survey of our schools. We would like the survey to include questions about school safety, remote days, parent and teacher conferences, district communication, extracurricular activities, homework, school and district administration, and parent involvement. In addition to respect to transparency, we asked the survey to be made public. This slogan, "In and Together," "Together is Always Better," is used in the district, and I would agree with this premise 100%. The middle school has demonstrated this by having five weekly newsletters and monthly parent forums, allowing parents to ask questions and bring up concerns. And then they demonstrate interest to us and responsiveness to us as parents. With discussion about how much money we need the school budget to increase by, increasing numbers of students leaving our district, and concerns about decreasing academic growth, making parent involvement a strategic goal in the district may be the singularly most important thing that we can do for our students.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hold on. Hold on, I'll be sure to talk to you later.
Hello, divisions?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And? I got a comment.
Hi. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Hi, my name is Erin Storrs. I have three sons in the community, with two of them in school. I am also a teacher of seven years. I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak and share my insights regarding the benefits of providing parent teacher conferences. I understand the reasons why the school has decided not to have spring conferences, especially as a teacher. However, the three-legged stool model that Jim often refers to has not been properly applied here. In case you were wondering what I'm referring to, I'm sure some of you know me, some of you don't. Jim uses an analogy of a three-legged stool representing building connection, building connection between teachers, parents, and students. It's a wonderful model to look at. These relationships are critical in supporting our children with their education. When any one of those legs are removed, it creates an imbalance in the stool. It is no longer able to stand upright. On the other hand, if any one leg is built stronger, it also creates an imbalance stool, weakening the other legs to stand. I bring up this because only one leg of this stool was asked about parent teacher conferences. As a parent, I would have very much liked the opportunity to weigh in on the subject before the decision was made. There are four main points that I would like to share. One, value teachers' times, time. Teachers are so often working beyond their schedule or contracted hours as it stands. When teachers want to meet or schedule a conference with parents because they see the value in them, they do so on their own time. Teachers do not get paid for this time. Number two, student focused. Having conferences is a way to empower students and for them to take ownership of their work and education. I know from being a parent and a teacher that there's nothing more joyful than seeing my son light up and being excited to share the work with me and their father. Likewise, with my students sharing with their families. Number three, involvement. Conferences offer an opportunity for parents to be involved within their child's education and provides an easy way for the school to include parent involvement and helps foster positive relationships between families and teachers, academic and social, and academic and social development. When working together, guardians and teachers can create a supportive learning environment that benefits the child. Number four, my final point, open doors wider. Too often, teachers are left wondering what is happening in their students' homes. I understand that phone calls and emails are always encouraged and required for teachers to stay in communication with their parents. However, when families are given an opportunity to meet face to face, it offers a more personal connection. It lends an open door for families to share more serious matters with their teachers. This open dialogue can help identify issues and create collaboration between families and teachers to solve arising issues. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope that you can see the value that parent teacher conferences hold for families and our community. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I also gathered signatures just to show that I am not just one person that feels this way. Um, I have about 65 signatures that I can hand over to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Is there any additional question, public comments from the room?
I received one via email. Um, I was able to print it off, but I'll be glad to share it with the board later this evening.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the screen?
Paul, I don't see, no, I forgot my writing tool.
Okay, we'll close the public comment section and move on to our reports, starting with our superintendent report.
So I sent my report out in the packet, and most of the things that are discussed on here are on the agenda. Uh, so I will not add. The only thing I would like to say, since we're timed after those public comments, is in the, since the last board meeting, I talked a little bit about communication with people, communicating with me. Um, I've received quite a number of emails and input from a number of staff, not staff, of union members, and I really appreciate that. It's been a frustration for me in the four years I've been here to essentially make myself available and have people not take advantage of it. They complain that we don't make ourselves available. So I do appreciate people reaching out. And. There are no appointments, no resignations, no retirements, no transfers.
Does the board have any questions regarding Jim's superintendent report?
Monica? Yes, um, so I see that we have. Let me look at this. I see that we have the budget is now advertised so that people, so the public can come to the budget workshop. Do, does the public have access to our budget working documents? If not, why not? Jim?
So I have to check that the school board is responsible. This is a not in public forum. This is a meeting of the school board. The school board does the budget, votes on the budget. People are welcome if they want to ask for it, but it is not routine for school boards to distribute their draft budgets to anybody. You guys need to make the decisions. I'm not going to say more because there's already a pending situation involving the attorneys that speaks to this, and I just think great concerns about not understanding the role of the school board. It is not a public forum. It is a, it is a business meeting held in public. And I know that's hard for some people here, but it's what the law says. It's not what Jim Hodgson thinks.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions?
Monica? I would just like to say that since the public is being asked to shoulder those costs, while we're developing what those costs might be, I think that it would be appropriate for people to be able to know and participate in public in the discussion about that. Why not? Jim?
I'm only going to make this last comment, and then I will say more if more questions come up. But this is an elected body, no real difference than our House of Representatives or Senate. You would know more than to have people go into the House and say or ask or present questions or want information. There's a process for getting that. Uh, we follow the same thing. You are elected by the people to represent them. Represent them. You make the decisions. That's the way the law says it's supposed to work, and we struggle to do that.
Thank you. Any other board comments, questions? Okay, moving on to the school board chair report. So we began our school tour, school tours today. We started at the Woodrow Middle School with Principal Smell. Um, it had been the board's intention to tour each school, and this year, we're finally making it happen. Uh, we saw some new carpet in the music room. We saw improvements to the organization in the library, and we even got to check out the two new boilers. Um, I'm just appreciative to Principal Smell for accommodating us and for answering her questions that we had today. The second item I have from my chair report is on the topic of the eclipse. Um, I did have some parents reach out to me, and they were wondering if we would be having an early release day. The administrators met, and it was decided that we would just have a regular day. The administrative team has been putting a lot of focus and energy into, um, creating activities around the eclipse and crafts to the perjury of the day. And at the middle school, they're even giving the students classes so they can. Oh, the whole district. Amazing, great. Uh, for the eclipse, so they can view it. Um, and any parent, of course, is, has the option to dismiss their child. Um, I know as far as someone here can mention safety concerns and questions, as far as those items, I would just refer to Superintendent Hodgson because I'll have, I don't have access to that information. Um, and I encourage, I encourage parents and community members to write their questions to them in our regard. And. I also want to touch upon the discussion we had last school board meeting about the surveys. Um, as a board, it is our responsibility to represent the majority while giving a voice to the minority. Um, even if nothing changes, you know, as far as the outcome of the survey and the votes, we still have fulfilled our responsibility to give that voice. Um, I also want to mention regarding the survey, there was initially a survey that was supposed to be sent out to the administrative team and just had two questions. I know Megan really handed that up. And I wanted to make it clear that I, that the Will survey, that I asked Jim to hold off on sending that out because we wanted to incorporate the parent language and suggestions into that survey, so that they could use that and incorporate it into sending out themselves. Um, and I just don't feel like Megan got the credit she deserved. I just wanted to clarify that as far as her role. But we are taking the feedback from parents and suggestions and total list material and to arrest as a board to move aside that one very. And that concludes my chair report. We'll move on to our committee reports. Oh, does anyone have any questions or comments? The board, okay. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance?
Um, we did not meet.
Thank you, Tim. Policy?
Uh, thank you. We did not meet and we scheduled our meeting time for now Saturday. It starts with T and it's next week at 4:30, what?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it's Tuesday, 4:30. Uh, and we're going to be discussing, uh, policies from the meeting event, right? E E H, B E D H, and then also continuing to work on the outstanding ones that we tried to review over the past years.
Thank you. Negotiations?
Okay, there we go. So, sorry, that would be me too. Um, negotiations, we are now meeting once a week for our negotiations, and we're working well together, and we're looking forward to meeting a lot and hoping to get it done as soon as possible.
Thank you, Katyn. We will now move on to the administrators' reports. Does anyone have any questions regarding any of the reports that were included in our packet today?
Amy? I do want the grade school, it notice, I'm reading through this real quick. Says Ben, Thomas, Marine, Christine, led an invisible mentor activity. Um, students, let's see. Those students who had fewer or no support adults were unwillingly assigned an invisible mentor. Such a wonderful idea. I'd like to have more information regarding this and how they came to the conclusion of what students did or did not, do not have parental support.
Jolene, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, and it's not parental support. It's, it's not within the school. And so what Christine and Maureen did, they listed all 300, I think that was like 95 students. They're listed on chart paper and put around the cafeteria. And then every single adult at that meeting goes through initials that they have a relationship or a connection with every single kid. We look at every single kid. And then those kiddos that might have had one or two adults as compared to kiddos that had seven or eight adults, those kiddos were then put in a list, and the adults in the building who might have volunteered to be a invisible mentor were assigned to those kiddos. So I have a kiddo that's been assigned to me. They don't know I'm assigned to them. They don't even know that I'm really mentoring them. But it's just a mentor making sure they know they're seen like multiple times throughout the day. So it might just be to make sure, like with mine, I check in every morning with this person. I check in during lunch, and I check in at the end of the day. But that person doesn't realize that's what I'm doing.
Awesome, thank you for clarifying. It's just in here, it looks a lot different. It does not come off that way.
Sorry, maybe I didn't describe it clearly enough. But that is what we're doing, is building relationships and ensuring that ten or three single kiddo in our building has a person.
Awesome, that definitely clarified for community members as well, so they understand that too. And you?
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for answering. Any other questions regarding, yes, Tim?
Um, and Sue, I just have a quick informational question. Um, why do they pay money here in the future?
Yes.
I know you already answered this, but I. Who is paying in $20,000, the three in five girls for special aid?
So my understanding is that the legislature is still working on voting for this to happen. So my understanding is that the legislature is still working on voting for this to happen. Starting next year, there's money that's available through the state similar to what we get. I'm gonna probably mess it up, so Jim, I'm looking to you. Two forty-nine E F B, yeah, that's two forty-nine. Whatever that, you know what I'm talking about.
Two seventy-nine.
Two seventy-nine. You know what I'm talking about. They're going to have a similar one for our three and four-year-olds, and it would be a separate pool of money for that population of students. I envision at some point that it will be rolled right into two seventy-nine.
What about that? I'm just trying to think future here. So they're coming into the building. Is that what, or are we still trying to figure that? I'm just trying to figure out if they have to come into the building, that just means, do we have enough adults?
So I think we're gonna have to work on our partnerships. We have, most of our three-year-olds are probably in daycare settings or early childhood settings, school-based settings that aren't public school. And so some of those relationships will continue to happen. Parents are going to want them to stay in those places. And so it's about receiving the services that they need for special education and whether that's the student coming in to the building to just get those services or they may be receiving services outward and we may be paying for those services outward somewhere else. And yes, work in progress.
Martha? I just wanted to add to what Ivy said, Jolene. I thank you for that explanation. It wasn't clear to me either. I've heard that process. It's wonderful. I'm so glad that you did that. And then I wanted also to respond to voicemail. There are so many things that I think are just really terrific in report. Late class, I didn't know that, but that's happening. Kudos to you on the communication that you're doing regularly with the parents and the newsletter. I'd like to see if you could add school board members to your recipients list or kind of keep us in the loop with that newsletter. But there's so much good stuff that you keep allowing us to tour this panel today.
Any other questions regarding administrative reports? Martha?
One more. Mr. Due For, yeah, I heard from a parent who probably today was concerned they haven't had enough to do to pass this loan, but I took this one down, whose child was headed frosty, weak, and did a lot of work, but is now being told that she won't get credit for that. Do you, how do you determine that? Can that happen and the child does the work, but then for some reason doesn't get the credit?
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, I'll send you the information.
Thank you.
I did have a question, if there are any other board comments. Is your question, is Megan still today?
She is. Yeah, she's still there.
Okay, just wanted to, in the curriculum update, there is this all green. I was wondering if you could clarify what all green is.
Yes, so hi, hi, everybody. Hi, maybe you guys listening, but I'm happy to answer that. So Alicia, just a clarification. Was it around the Ed Reports comment for that curriculum, that program?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so Ed Reports is kind of this body that will do curriculum review programs. It's not affiliated with them. It's a nonprofit organization. And they rank on three different areas of curriculum. So they look at usability, they look at standard alignment, and they look at cohesiveness throughout the program. And they use a color coding system. So all green means that it has passed each of those different pathways and to earn scores for each of those. So it's kind of one of the checks that we'll do. And we're looking at programming to see what this entity has kind of graded things at as we also think about the specific needs of our students here in Winthrop. So the all green is good. Green is good, green is good.
Thank you, Megan. And I also, if the board's having more questions, I'll go ahead and ask my final question. I actually really liked seeing the workshop agenda. And I wondered if that has been done at this before or just goes up to the board. It's just really neat to see it. It's actually similar to how the grade school management sets up their workshops, and I just thought that was great to see.
So I'm not, sorry, I'm not sure if you have a question exactly in there. So we do have workshop days with agendas that are put out to staff. This is the first time ever that we've done a different way, the teacher-led venture agenda, which has presenters from the DOE. We've had a licensed social worker offer sessions and also sessions that are run by staff. So as you're looking at that agenda, all those names highlighted in orange are all our own staff members who were willing and eager. They got great feedback on writing their own sessions to teach their colleagues, which was fantastic. It's a great balance of both highlighting and promoting our own teacher leadership and pairing with some outside speakers to show that we're really investing also with the broken bar of professional staff. So all regular ed teachers were able to attend that as well as had tax on that day. And then publicly, I just like to thank Dominique and Lewiston. There was a group of teachers and Joseph Randall who arranged for some donated food for our teachers. So it was really pretty awesome to watch everybody in our district in one room at the high school sharing a meal after doing a whole morning of learning. It was really great. It was a wonderful day, very positive feedback. And thank you, Alicia, for highlighting that that's something that took a lot of work. And the feedback was a hundred percent positive, which is not always the case. So very, very grateful to all of our presenters.
Thank you, Megan. All right. Okay, I believe that concludes our comments from the board regarding our administrators' reports. We will move on to our National Artist Society presentations.
Hello, my name is Salma Hawn. I'm very thankful to be here. Thank you for letting me present to you guys. I am Ms. Moore, and I run the Care and Cover. So our mission statement is in the Care and Cover, our mission is to cultivate a compassionate and supportive environment within our school community by providing essential hygiene products and school supplies to students in need. We are committed to fostering dignity, inclusivity, and equal access to resources for all students, recognizing that access to these items is integral to a positive and empowering educational experience. Now, as you can see on my slide, there are just a few of the essential items provided. The Care and Cover is stocked with essential items aimed at supporting the well-being of students of their high school. Inside of Room 109, also known as Pandora's Room, students can find a lot of free hygiene products and school supplies. The cover generously offers items such as deodorants, tampons, dry shampoo, pencils, folders, toothpaste, toothbrushes, and backpacks. It goes beyond meeting the immediate needs of students and provides a resourceful space where students can access vital tools for personal care and academic success. The Care and Cover is open from seven fifteen to seven forty-five and one forty-five to two fifteen. So a big part of my job is to get the word out. I was responsible for managing all the advertising efforts for the Care and Cover. Over the course of the year, I created two posters which I then displayed around the school. Additionally, I presented twice at the town meeting to verbally inform students about the Care and Cover's initiatives. Ms. Marshall, our school librarian and English teacher, allowed me to put an outpost in the library filled with school supplies. This can be accessed wherever, whenever the library is open, allowing students who are able to come early and stay late at school to access these essential items. Similarly, a small shelf outside the library hosts snacks and hygiene products. Writing the Care and Cover is a daunting task. That's why I'm so thankful that the high school has an eclectic, kind, and caring student body who aided in our mission. Maddie Beck, Teagan Gogan, and Mr. McCarver all helped make a shelf for the Care and Cover outpost right at the library. I'd also like to highlight the amazing Katie Corhurla, who helped coordinate with our local Hanford to secure division and help stock the Care and Cover. Looking toward the future. The Care and Cover is doing amazing. However, there's always work to be done in aspects that can be improved. That's why Katie Marshall and I had applied for the Nersh Neighbors Program to expand the science and quality of project. There was a video element to that location where Katie was in front of the camera explaining her project, and I was behind recording and afterwards editing. We hope to hear from the foundation within the coming months to see what's on the ground. Lastly, for your information, we're holding our NHS brand auction on April 2nd. And as president of the National Artist Society, I'd like to invite all school board members to come and celebrate the active accomplishments of these amazing young women. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much. Very nice job. Is there a time on April 2nd? Six, seven, perfect. And if you have any more questions? Ivy?
I think you did amazing. This is awesome to hear it's going on in our schools, and I really look forward to these moments. It's great. Thank you.
Oh, one second. Any other board comments? I have one. Do you know how many people you were able to serve or help?
I can just imagine. In the hallways, you'd see a bunch of people like robbing popcorn from there. See it, that's a very, very current.
Nice job there, Blackx, too, about those posters. Any final thoughts? Thank you so much for presenting. Nice job. And then here from our second presenter.
Hello, Chris. And you've seen me as well. And for my NHS project, I chose to make fleece toys for cats and dogs that are living in shelters. And as I was working on my project, it began to grow into much more than just toys. My materials that I used for making these toys were about ten yards of fleece that I bought from local stores like Obi-Wabi, Joann's, Martin's. And along with that, I ordered sheets of plastic crinkle wrap, squeakers, and cabinets through Amazon to put inside the toys. The materials used for selling in the yard I already had available, so I didn't need to purchase them. Some of the toys I made involved cutting out strips of fleece and braiding them together to various lengths and tied knots in them for administrative to make pool toys. And I have some examples here as well. Here are some of the pool toys that are very stretchy. And crinkle toys with squeakers. So what initially started as making fleece toys for the homeless animals branched out into making fleece hats for the homeless. During the colder winter month, my indoor track coach was working with homeless people and mentioned the need for warm winter clothing. With all of this fleece, the idea to make hats began. The first batch of about twelve hats were handed out in less than ten minutes, and the people were very grateful to receive them. I also have examples of these as well. Very colorful and lots of options. So far, I've made about fifty dog toys, and my goal is to make at least eighty before I deliver them. And I will be delivering them to the Waterville Humane Society. I've also made about fifteen cat toys, and my goal is to make fifty of them. These are some examples of some of the fleece hats I've made. So far, thirty-two of them have been handed out to the homeless this winter. The plan is to stockpile as many as I can to give out for the next winter. And just to let you know, these toys are dog-tested and dog-approved. And lastly, I would like to mention the food drive that NHS was hosting that was supposed to be this weekend due to weather got postponed until later date.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or comments? Ivy?
I just want to say this is also amazing. I think that's great that you spent it from dog toys to helping homeless. I just, you know, wow, this is amazing. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question about, I'm wondering how you chose Waterville Humane Society?
Well, I've been up, I've been up at the shelter and I've just seen all of the homeless animals and whatnot that are there. So I figured branch out and go there since a lot of attention has been some of the ultimate guest there. So we're gonna spread the love.
Absolutely. Also, I believe the chicken hat, too, in there, and that was a popular style.
My coach took that one and he loved it.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you so much for presenting. Well done, both of you.
Thank you.
We'll move on in our agenda to our discussion regarding the Drummond Woodson webinar.
You want me to do it first? So Drummond Woodson did a six-hour webinar, which is really a challenge to stay focused during that time. I attended, Alicia attended, but it's separately. And it really focused on two areas. One was the Freedom of Access Act. I always say FOA, it's like it's a bit, and they said FOA, too, so I felt support there. And the second was on the participation of board meetings, which is a policy will be previewed, part reviewed once. They've made some recommendations to try to clarify that. Right, it's a common misunderstanding. And so we're going to do that. They had three interns that were there. I thought it was kind of cool. After each little section, they would do a, not every section, but they'd do a quiz. I think just to see if we're paying attention or whatever the case may be. But I felt really good about that, too, because a lot of it wasn't really new information. But the interviewists were pretty interesting. So I got a lot out of it. And so Chip first, Ross was very lost, like, you know. I love your agenda.
Yes, so it is interesting to attend a long Zoom meeting. That was nine to two thirty. I think they did a pretty good job at incorporating some of the involvement with taking the surveys or questions, quizzes at the end, and using some examples to kind of illustrate how those policies would be put in place. I had, Joe and I had a conversation at a meeting, so I kind of already addressed some of my confusion that I had or some things. I think, yeah, it was informative. And so I hope that we'll, you know, be able to, in our next policy meeting, over the policy that we had talked about during that meeting and use that to sort of facilitate our discussion there. And that's about it. Any questions, though? Martha?
Yes, is this something that was reported that other workers can read?
It wasn't, it's actually, it's something that, you know, costs money, so it can stay there, but yeah. Thank you for questioning, Martha. And moving on to our discussion regarding buses.
So Josh and I represent a fair amount of information and then it's really going to be important for the board to weigh in because I'll start with the end. Then we'll kind of go to a little approximation. Josh can jump in if anything. But start with the, what's been the ongoing concerns about the electric buses and we've had to have rental buses from steer bus lines this year because we haven't had full use of electric buses. All of them, we were advised to take them out of service. And Lion Electric is the company that we get the buses from and they took all four of them back and did a complete evaluation of all of them and made some corrections. We, I had a CD, but we, Josh had a CD. But we are going to get a copy of all things that were done. They did speak about some of the major ones. We did have a bus that lost power was sort of sparked our decision to take them all out of service. They explained what happened in that situation and feel very confident. For me, I think that I was really looking for more information because I know that our community is going to be somewhat reluctant to want to put their children on those buses. But they're like, I don't know what we can tell you. We've gone through them. It's really critically important for you to understand, speaking to us, and the Department of Education was on the call as well, that their reputation is on the line. They can't afford to not have the buses to be successful. I got the sense from Josh to speak for himself that they really didn't take them seriously. They went through them pretty comprehensively. And we're being told by the department that we will take them back. And we have to decide what we want to do or how to handle that moving forward. So that side, there's a lot more. So I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of questions. I happen to answer them. The second thing is, and I give all the credit to Josh for this, we have applied for and been approved for three, emergency funding for three more diesel buses. We've already received one. And the other two should be coming by the end of the month, we hope. Actually, I'm sorry. The electric buses, all due back to us by the end of the month. The diesel buses by May. Yeah, maybe a little bit longer. That's good news and I think it's good news. The, when I say emergency funding, all that means is they're going to pay us back. We still have to upfront the money. So when we, it's not really related to the budget. I already talked about this before that we're going to ask the top household next week to approve us from the undiscputed funds, money for some projects for Joel and some project for three buses. We upfront the money over the next three years and we get all the money back. So we do get 100% reimbursement. But we don't get it all at once. And we don't get it upfront. So I think that's really, really good news. Strangely, we already know we're approved for three more buses for next year, but I don't see that we'll be needing three more buses. We've gone from not having any fleet to having a pretty robust fleet at this point. And we'll see. The electric buses are still a little wildcard, but I think what Lion Electric convinced me was that we have to try them. They want them to be successful as much as we want them to be successful because they feel like, I mean, we had the biggest number of electric buses in the state. So they were very concerned. They had the voice on the conversation with us about things that had been said about electric buses. Like, okay, we'll get them back, have them work the way they're supposed to and everything will be great. But we'll see. We'll see. So Josh, will you? Great, your question. Basically, just to echo what Jim said, we did a lengthy conversation with Lion. They gave us a great deal of confidence in fact that they have thoroughly been through these vehicles, both from an engineering perspective and a mechanical perspective. They feel that they're ready to go back on work. And as Jim said, I think that it's, we're in a position where we kind of need to give them a chance. I say that with kind of a question mark at the end of the sentence because we've been faced with a lot of barriers and a lot of struggles. So I guess Jim and I both kind of, of the need for our conversation was to come to you to get your feedback as far as your thoughts and opinions on bringing these things back into service and also to be prepared for whatever conversations may ensue from parents and community members and so forth. When we do, I will say, however, that with the, our impending arrival of the three emergency funded buses, we're also in a position where we don't need them as badly as we did before, which I guess is a sort of a happy accident. And that sounds to say that we won't use them. Again, I'm completely up for discussion on how we do that, how that looks. But again, I guess the biggest thing is I just want to make sure that we do that. Number one, with these extra buses that we're just going to get or order, we are in a position where we're okay if we end up for some reason not running through those buses. So there's options there. And then I don't know exactly how this is going to look and how much we'll be up for conversation. As Jim mentioned, we did get the approval now for the three immediately. And then we have a free approval for fall, for up to three more if we choose. We can choose to only go with one or two. My thoughts on that were that we may want to consider trying to get at least one more because that would put us in a position where we have enough buses to run all of our routes and where the caddy can have a trip bus and a spare bus. So that would be a good position to be in if it's an option. I understand there's a possibility. With this year refunding certain systems in a position where it's much easier to store other than the fact that we have to upfront them, like Jim said. So I guess what I'm saying as far as coming to you is I don't feel comfortable putting my signature as the only person without a mind saying, I'm 100% comfortable with going back to this. I am certainly willing to give it a shot. I'm willing to be the first person to welcome and test drive them and run through their bases and make sure that I don't find any glitches before I release them back to use our fleet. I can also say, and I don't get too much into detail on this, but I do know that some of our drivers are hesitant just because of issues that we've had. I know that we do have at least one driver who kind of feels the same way I do with these ones that give it a shot and see what goes. So anybody has any questions for me? Certainly more than having answered them or if you're just want to kind of weigh in on the discussion. I think there's a statement as well.
Thank you, Josh and Jim. We'll start with both.
I just want to, I don't remember if I said this to you. I was just looking at my notes. On that conversation with Lion was the Lion was the president of the company. So it wasn't like we were just partnering the technicians and whatever they were. Yeah, the president and we, one of the vice presidents as well. I think the head of engineering and the head of technical services were involved. Something like that. But there were a handful of them. They were enthusiastic.
Thank you. More questions? Monica?
Has there been any discussion regarding having these buses independently evaluated before we put them back on the road?
Yes, 100%. As soon as I can get my hands on them, I will make another appointment with the state police enforcement inspection and then to come up and do their independent inspection process on them, just like they did before they left us.
Can you? Amy?
I have a lot of concern. Just know a little bit of mechanics and engineering. The fact that it's a critical failure, there's no backup to steering or power. I wouldn't put my child or any other child on those buses. I know that you have experience with buses, Josh. I know them quite well. This electric bus is new. I don't know, not being a certified mechanic, AES trainer, whatever it is, that you would even consider putting that burden upon yourself to test drive these? Because if you say it's okay, then that can open up to liability because you're putting credit on something that, you know, you're not trained, certified in.
Sure.
I, as a parent, and I'm sure there's many others, that after seeing what has occurred so far, that I wouldn't risk or even agree to put these back on our roads and allow children on them.
So just, yes, thank you. A couple of things. I just wanted to be clear when I say I've been usually first to take a test drive. I'm only talking about from an operational perspective. I am not a certified mechanic. I have been a bus driver for 25 years, but I'm definitely not a mechanic. That's why I want to have the state police be the first ones to have their hands on them when they get here. As soon as they arrive, like I said, I'll make an appointment to get those guys to come through. And they come in with their creepers and they go underneath and check everything from stem to stern. And they'll put air force on them first. And then I'm more interested in kind of running it from an operational perspective, just to see, all right, are we going to throw error codes? Are we going to have more failures? Have all the electrical and mechanical issues been corrected? And that sort of stuff. And again, I have no intention of being one to sign off on this saying, yes, I feel there are two to go because I'm 100% uncomfortable with that. And then, you know, I'll get the inspection units to do their inspections first, then I'll do mine. And other than that, I agree with you that there is some hesitation.
Would you, Jim and I agree?
I think, yeah, I mean, I understand that Dan once said that they've spoken to the CEOs and all that. We all know that anybody who benefits a profit from something is going to tell you a smug truth with a lot of lie because it's their reputation in their pockets. So it doesn't matter whether it's the president or not. I think at this point, our community is important. Our children are important. And that's where we should go. And liability shouldn't fall on you.
Thank you. I appreciate that and I agree with you on this.
Thank you, Amy, Jim?
The other thing that was told to us is that they're going to start that we never received the buses, both from a warranties standpoint. That's a small consideration. And the president said that. He's like, you know, that we can restart the warranty. It's small potatoes, you know, walking the big picture. But they're going to also come in and spend time retraining, like they had done no training at all. And they're going to provide training for all of the people who potentially could drive on the buses, including how to detect certain things and read the codes and those types of things. So while I agree 100% with what you just said, they have a product, they've sold the products. It's not like they're trying to sell it, but they, they, I think they have a strong vested interest in what the president said about, they just can't afford for this to be, for them to fail. They've been in the bus making business for not long enough, but they've done it successfully all over Canada and the United States. So I don't think, if I draw one tiny piece of confidence in that conversation, it's that they can't afford they can't afford to mess it up again. It can't go wrong. And they say, and Josh and I actually live the drive of a bus, so the bus did have critical failures, but the backups did work. And what that means is essentially that their power steering, power, R-Rex or ABS, whatever the actual word is, but when those failed, it's like driving a car from the, you know, 50s. It takes a lot of effort, but it can still be steered. It can still be brake. And, you know, those type, those systems did not fail. If I can just address that one way, just so that everybody knows what I'm saying. As far as the backup systems go, they stated that they did work. And I want to be abundantly clear to the fact that to the extent that the backup systems exist, they did work. But let me clarify. When the bus failed the second time on me, what I experienced was a complete loss of power steering and a significant reduction in power or hydraulic braking. Now, for those of you that may not fully understand what that means, let me just clarify a little bit. As Jim said, when you lose power steering, you're mechanically turning that with your own strength. Now, if you've ever tried to turn the wheel of your car, you're trying to keep the on position and unlock your wheel and then try to turn your wheel without power steering, you know that it's a pretty, that's a pretty significant thing. Take a 30,000 pound school bus and try to do the same thing without warning. And to me, that's the biggest part, is that this happens without warning. Okay? And I'm not saying it didn't happen without warning to me. I'm saying to the initial driver, this happened without warning to him. I at least knew that there was a problem. So I was at least somewhat expecting it. Okay, now if this were to happen again, if this were to happen again, it would potentially happen again without warning. Now, that's steering. As far as braking goes, again, just to be fully transparent because I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea of what I'm saying. There is a 12 volt, meaning a low voltage backup braking pump that is equipped in all of those buses. When the high voltage failure occurred, the high voltage, so the batteries that run the driver, the batteries that drive the bus, that side of the system shut down. The 12 volt brake backup pump did kick in. But again, that is a system that feels and operates significantly differently than the actual service brakes normally do. So again, is it possible to stop the bus full of gas? It is. Gravity is going to stop the bus eventually. But again, it's sort of like if you put, if you take a pilot and you put him in a flight simulator, knowing exactly what's going to happen versus a pilot, a pilot who's flying a plane full of people in the air. It's two very different situations. So when you take a bus and you have a failure and the driver was not expecting it, you suddenly have no assistance to your steering and handle, significantly less assistance to your braking. That was my concern about the situation. And again, I at least had heads up that there was a problem. The driver that initially had the issue did. So I just wanted to be very clear on that because that was one of the things that, for lack of a better term, Lion kind of shamed me for the way that I explained this to you before. So I don't want this to be abundantly clear on exactly how that happened. And I apologize if that's getting a little too technical. I just wanted to be transparent about that.
Thank you very much. Kater?
I just want to, I have a question for us. I'm wondering if our, these are the focus of our conversation. Given the impending decision to be making, are we trying to decide what we're looking forward? Are we getting information from you? I just wanted to hear is, is, is there a decision moving forward that we need to be thinking about as we discuss this?
Well, I dare say that there is. I would also say that you don't have, there's nothing making that, there's nothing forcing you to make that decision right now. The buses aren't even here yet. We don't know when they're going to be here. They told us that they have two before ready to come back. They have not given us a breakdown of what has been done or they've given us a timeline as to when they will arrive. Even after those things are, like I said, I won't do anything with them until the state police come through their inspection. So we really have those three kind of big things. We're waiting for the list of all those picks, a timeline for delivery, and then to get the state police inspection. At that point in time, to go back and answer your question, I feel that we, you, us, all of us, will have to make a decision as to how we want to either roll these things back into operation or mothball them or something into problems.
Okay. Amy?
Just to clarify, the first time that Katie spoke with us, you stated that there is no braking at all. And now you're saying that there is, there was some sort of braking?
It's not that there was no braking at all. It's just that the pedal is basically dead. The, as I said, the backup system did engage. But for what that backup system will do compared to the feel and action of the normal braking system, it's a completely different feeling. Now, I guess, I guess to say that there was no braking at all Now, I guess, I guess to say that there was no braking at all is not accurate. And if I said that, I apologize. But the backup system kicked in, it's just that the backup system is completely different than the regular service braking system. And it doesn't provide the same level of operator, it requires a different level of operator effort than the regular braking system does. So again, you can, similar to, you can, you can turn, you can physically turn the wheel, you can physically press the brake pedal, it's just a completely different level of effort.
And then one more question, so if we put these buses back on line, and we have another critical failure, and there's an accident, and children get injured as well as the driver, where does that liability fall?
Jim?
That probably falls on us, that would fall on us with our regular buses, now our diesel buses. It would fall on us with our kids loading and not loading the bus. I mean, any of those types of things are gonna fall on us.
Thank you, any other board questions? Monica?
Thank you very much for clarifying that, Josh, I really appreciate it. I am, just to say an opinion, I know we're not at the point of making a decision maybe on this, but I am a hundred percent with you. I don't want to risk our kids, I don't care about the reputation of Lion, or what they may have infested or whatnot. I, Josh drove the school bus into a snowbank. We don't have snow now, we're not gonna have snow again. And I don't want the driver to have to drive the bus into the trees with maybe some kids on board. It, I think it's entirely too risky.
Thank you, Monica. Any other more questions? I do.
Another question, I just want to respond to Catherine's. That was sort of our, and Josh kind of spoke to this. Had this discussion tonight, I think the next, our next meeting, regular meeting is April third or something like that. Maybe we'll have more information, but I think ultimately we are, I mean, I don't want to make the decision. Josh doesn't want to make the decision, I can relate with it to the size of this board. And I will say, one of the things that we'll look into more between now and then is, they didn't, they weren't prepared to answer this question when I asked it during the meeting. What if, I can ask the D O E, what if we don't want them anymore at all? We, they did not cost us anything. I think that's sort of the challenge for me personally. And I think you should all do, you know, try to be objective when you're thinking about this is, think about the reason we went with electric buses to begin. It wasn't just that we could get them free, and they're, you know, they're three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars apiece as opposed to a hundred and twenty-five for the diesels. Wasn't that, I think, is about some sort of belief in electric buses and the environment and that type of stuff. So I know there was a failure, but we have, you know, cars and things fail a lot. So I'm not helping making that decision, but ultimately, you guys may need to really tell us whether or not we ever put them back in this service.
Thank you, Jim, I do have a question. I'm just trying to get some clarification around what you said about the driver not having any indication. And you did have an indication where codes were thrown or whatever, or whatnot. And you mentioned that there would be some training. Is that, you knew what the codes meant, and the other driver didn't know what the codes meant?
No, no. The other driver was going about his business like he normally would. It thankfully occurred at a time and place where the failure was, albeit critical, it was not a failure that was going to cause, cause an accident. Because he was able to, he had just come around, it was on Lardisville Terrace, he went down over the hill, hooked to the left on the road, right as he made that turn is when the failure occurred. So he wasn't given any heads up, so to speak, as to the fact that there was an issue pending. The issue occurred, the bus basically drifted to a stop, and he stopped and followed. What I mean by I had a heads up was the fact that I was the one that went and grabbed the spare bus, brought it to him, transferred the children safely over to the other bus, sent them on his way. And then I'm sitting there on the side of the road in this bus saying, okay, I'm going to do what I've been taught, which was to do what they call hard reset, basically depower the whole system, wait for, you know, thirty to sixty seconds, re-power back up, and see if the fault goes away. That's exactly what I did, the fault did go away. And I rebooted the bus, the fault was gone, so I said okay. That's what they taught us to do. So the fault was gone as far as the indicator on the display. Clearly, it was, there was still a problem with routing, but it was not indicating at that time that there was a problem. So after rebooting it, the fault code that was showing on the screen went away. The bus started back up. I tested, sitting on the side of the road on Lardisville Terrace, I tested the steering, tested the brakes, and even felt operational. So I said, well, I'm gonna attempt to drive this back to the bus yard. And at that point in time, the fault was gone. So I did, drove it, and then when I got a good portion of the way back to the bus yard, was when the failure popped up again. And thankfully, I was able to, as I said, drift off to the side of the road and come to rest at the, basically at the entrance to the Catholic Church now in front of the fuel. And, you know, bring it to a stop with the assistance of the, so. So I guess, just to clarify, I only meant that I had a heads up in so much as I knew that this issue was, was there. The other driver was given no sort of pre-indication that there was a problem.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So what is the purpose of the training? And why wasn't it done before?
Oh, it was, oh, it was. I took the training, so from Jim, I wanted to be able to train the drivers, which we did. I went through and did all this, all the training with all of the drivers. And Lion feels that they want to basically retrain us to make sure that, I guess, to make sure that none of those misses. I was probably more than happy to do that, I don't feel that, I don't feel that there's, and maybe I'll be, maybe I'll change my mind later, but right now, I don't know that there's a whole lot of things that they're retraining that have changed in this situation. Because we did what we were, so.
So were training allowing you to kind of see what the code isn't, be able to diagnose that?
No, no. That's all, those are all tasks that could be performed by a technician with a laptop and, you know, thousands of hours of training on daily carries. This isn't something that's field diagnostic.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. So here at last school year, I had a similar situation in my class. Coming down a hill on a corner, being a diesel bus, I know how hard it was just to stop the bus and it goes with no power. How much worse is that in an electric bus versus what I went through in the diesel bus?
If I recall, that bus you were driving was hydraulic.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be essentially, essentially the same scenario. And again, I can't speak to the type of backup pump that was used in that bus that you were driving versus the type that was used, that is used in these buses. But it would be a similar scenario in so much as if you had total engine failure, say, in your bus, you would have lost your hydraulic, your primary hydraulic pump, so it would switch to the backup pump. And you would have lost your power steering pump. So it would be a similar scenario in the electric bus.
So that, so basically it was, I mean, I lost steering and braking, but I did have some control of braking enough to slow on a hill on a corner.
Yes.
And we're a twelve volt battery backup pump. You know, I wonder if we can get the information pertaining to that from Lion so that we can make the comparative to hydraulic? Just so we can get a better understanding of the difference between the two.
We can, we certainly could ask for clarification on that for them. I don't know, I don't know how they sort of quantify the performance of those hydraulic pumps. And I'm not sure how they would compare that to the ones that we had before, but we certainly can try that.
Awesome, thanks, Josh.
Absolutely.
I did have another question. Both Jim and you mentioned there are three, you've approved three of our buses. Is that a diesel version?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The one, I picked up one from Friday, and it's here and in service today. In fact, I just came back and picked it up. And then two more, they're coming, because they're coming from the factory, so they're telling me they're probably gonna need new people for the other two. And those are all three brand new twenty twenty-five vehicles.
Okay, and then there was another, this one, about three more potential, I did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, so I did put in preemptively, so I put in the request for emergency funding now. And then I preemptively put in another request for three more of the fault, just so that it would be on books. So that we wouldn't miss the boat essentially, if we decided that we did need more vehicles in the fall. It's valid on books, if we decide we don't need those, or we don't want those, as I said, we can select three, two, one, or none, and there's no question on our part in doing so.
Thank you, and this question is going forward, Jim. Can you just, I'm trying to understand the emergency planning. We pay upfront, but it will be reimbursed?
Absolutely, yeah. Really what it's like is we've got approved the three buses for next year, and they're giving them to us in advance. Thinking about next year, it's way too soon to be thinking too much about this, but after we purchase three more brand new buses, the likelihood of us having any more money to purchase buses beyond this year for a year or two is pretty slim. They're now up to, when I first started buying buses, they were like eighty-five thousand, now they're up to almost a hundred and thirty. They're expensive.
Thank you, any other board comments regarding the bus discussion? You'll move on to our discussion regarding parent teacher conferences. Monica?
I'd like to make a motion that we reinstate spring parent teacher conferences that we actually asked superintendent, captain, and administrators to reinstate spring parent teacher conferences beginning this spring going forward.
It's my understanding that this year has already passed, and Jim, maybe you can elaborate on that, but could we have it as soon as next year, is my understanding?
So two things, that motion would be unlawful to make that tonight. It's, it's, this boy has spent a lot of time misusing the term of right to know, but this is absolutely, this is not on the agenda. There, I'm sure, I know that there are parents out there, because I've got both sides of the story, that it's not on the agenda, the public doesn't know that this agenda, this action is being considered. So I would find it, I would say you should not make a motion without advising the community that you plan to do that. There's a lot more information to be gathered, and I have a presentation to make as well.
Could you speak to the time, I believe, I might be, maybe I'm wrong, but as far as reinstituting parent conferences that could occur as early as?
Yeah, I could, I, the committee did reach out to me and ask me, and the earliest that I could see it happening would be next spring. And that is because, first of all, there's no days, we have no more workshop days in our calendar. So there would be no way to compensate, oh, I guess we could, you feel like you want to spend the money to compensate them. But I think that's only the beginning of the issue. I think this is, this is sped way out of control. And I want to first say what I said before, this is not me. I'm a little, I know I get to be the superintendent, so I get credit when I don't deserve it, I also have to take the criticism, but this didn't start with me, this isn't my decision. And it didn't happen on the slide, and it didn't happen once. This, this, looking back, the minutes from January twenty-two through April of twenty twenty-two, this was discussed at least four times. So it's, 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 it's an issue that's had its good amount of time. And I will go through the whole process, that when we were looking back in twenty-two, we had used a number of workshop, I mean, snow days. And we were beginning the process of looking, identifying where we might be able to make up some days that year. That's how it started. That was at a meeting with, I meet with the association every two weeks, or twice a month. And the association suggested, maybe we look at canceling spring conferences and using that data as scheduled for that, to, as a comp date, to have a regular student day. I said, that's fine with me, I don't personally think spring conferences are a great idea, but that doesn't make it my decision. There are a lot of times I have to support decisions that I don't necessarily agree with, sometimes I do. It isn't up to me. It's been a little, it's been very frustrating. So they said, well, why don't we have second conferences if we don't need to have them? I said, well, the strike needs to happen. So what do we have to do to not have them anymore? So I explained what the process was, and they dug the poll of the teachers now. The sports didn't say, we did not poll. And we can accurately, thankfully, from my perspective, talk about the three-legged school notion that I use. But I think the decision ultimately on the, at the board level, and this will look around now, if you, well, somebody's been here. But, yeah, anyway, yeah, the was that the administrative, we felt that the door, that people should feel comfortable to come to school. The teachers should be reaching out, that there's nothing unique or special about a particular day in the spring that makes it feel like it's beneficial to the teachers. That's their perspective. I haven't agreed with it, but it's not my perspective per se in terms of this discussion. I don't have a dog in this fight. You decided to put the conferences back in, but the conferences back in. But I think you're gonna have, the vote was forty-one to eighteen against continuing parent teacher conferences. My sense is that the staff has spoken pretty loudly that they don't see the value, and they much prefer to make people aware. And that was some of the feedback I got from some of the parents who wrote to me specifically to say they felt, had felt very comfortable reaching out to their teachers, and they've been in a number of talks to meet with them, and it isn't at a particular day sometime in spring. It's whenever they need to go. So, you know, I'm just sharing that information. So ultimately, you can, you can do that, but you cannot do it tonight.
Jim, could you say in your presentation?
Well, I'm basically.
Okay, good. Catherine?
Yes, so I was here for the decision, the voting decision about making this change. As to have a discussion about this, I sort of, I'm, I could be swayed either way. I don't feel, you know, huge in one way or the other. I think, as all decisions, they're trade-offs for what, when you go one direction versus the other direction. And if the tone and tenor has changed, and there's some other things we should consider, I think we should bring those to our attention and discuss them. I think it's my understanding that the conference or that, that day that was just had, it's the color, the one with the colorful, you know, the workshop day, that is the day that the, the school district decided to use teacher time to do that instead of parent teacher conferences. So I think it's one of those things that you just, you think about where we think we want to use our time and our resources and have a discussion about it. I also don't feel, I'm not here arguing one side or the other. I think we just, we talk about your local hearing and what we think, and try and make a best decision for our community at the time right now. So we used to have them, we voted not to have them, and I'm just, we believe that. I think it's trade-offs that we want to think about, because I do believe this was the day that would have been spring conferences. And so we were all celebrating how amazing that is, and that would be something we would believe we would have, so you can't have it. So that was my two cents.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other board members? Tim?
Do we know surrounding school districts, how many are taking spring conferences? I know where I'm at studying school district time.
I have not done a poll, but I, I would say that well over half of the schools around us have a second conference. Probably, I can tell you this, I need to get away from my obvious age, but forty years ago when I started in this profession, nobody had two conferences. Then, over the last twenty, twenty-five years, it's become more something. Uh, then over the last twenty, twenty-five years, it's uh, it's become more something people have done. I wanna speak to Catherine's point as well because we currently have the minimum number of of, we have the minimum, I read that we have the minimum number of student days, which is one hundred seventy-five by law. We have the minimum number of workshop days, which is five as prescribed by law. We use two of those days to uh, to open schools. We always use two days to open the school. We use one in the rubber as to comp day for the parent teacher conferences. That leaves us with two. Um, and and as Catherine has accurately stated, we, if we go back to parent teacher conferences, we would need to add more workshop days, which we're negotiating, so I can't speak too too much about that. That would be a personal goal to add, that maybe it makes some sense. Uh, we also have the least number of early release days in the area. Uh, some, some school systems, uh, where my wife used to teach, they had them every single Wednesday for the uh uh, kind of the elementary, the uh elementary schools. Uh, they used to have them every Wednesday for the entire system. Uh, and now, you know, we still have basically four or five. We have five here in the district. And two of those are um the day before Christmas, which we don't keep people for that, late for that. And the last gift school is the half day. So we actually, in reality, have three uh early release days. So it's not as simple as as just looking at uh whether we want conferences or not. And by the way, if you look at our calendar, you might look at it now and say, why can't we look that? Um, the day, since we have not had a parent, second parent teacher conference, the Friday before, and this is the next thing on the agenda. The Friday before April vacation has been a no day. It's it's not anything, it's not a comp day, it's not a workshop day, doesn't count in one seventy-five, one of five. Uh, and that's because we are required to, because we have to align with Kathy. We had that discussion last meeting. So um I I uh I just presented the information. I would just say this is part. Um, Catherine kind of said it, but I just wanted to read what I had down here. So when it shows up in the minutes today that I said it. Um, staff was bullish about that they wanted to keep the second conference or not. They voted forty one eighteen to discontinue that second conference and the board voted to discontinue the second conference on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, in April, there was more discussion in which one school committee membership that we need to clarify to parents that they can and should meet with their child's teacher whenever they have questions. And that teachers should reach out to parents whenever they have uh questions or concerns. Uh, parents, they should not wait for a specific date in the spring, so we tend to touch them to meet. Jared, Eddie had heard from parents who appreciate being able to meet with their child's teacher, teachers as needed. Uh, staff finding far more valuable, I met with the association before, that happened, just happened to be before this meeting. Uh, they feel it's still the case for the uh, for the staff. There's no ground swell, uh, since this has been discussed a little more publicly for people to say, we 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 want them back, we think they're a good idea. Um, and in our conversation today, I was like, parent teacher conferences are basically fifteen to twenty minutes long. All the things that were sort of talked about that happen in parent teacher conferences don't happen during parent teacher conferences. Uh, what usually happens is, at the very base is, they will say, well, we need to meet, I'd like to meet with you more, because I'm not gonna cover the uh, all the things that need to be, need to be covered at fifteen to twenty minute conversation. Those will happen at a different time. I raised four children. Two were special ed, one had five oh four, the other one was just a pain in the butt. I've had to visit the school a lot because of him. Um, uh, you know, attended quite a number of of uh parent teacher conferences. I have a pretty good sense of what happens at that.
Thank you, Jim. Eddie?
When you um write a copy of what the, the video you brought, can we have a copy of those minutes too as well, because I wasn't part of the time.
Um.
What Jimmy just said.
Clarification. What exactly? Are you asking more for?
You want these minutes?
Yeah, copy of those minutes too.
Go with those guys.
Monica, uh, thank you for that information. Uh, that is not, not enough time uh to present the motion. So, okay. Um, uh, we have it listed here on the agenda that we have discussion now. So I've asked you now, since we have the discussion now with parents who came forward, will it be appropriate to make that motion next meeting? If not, why not? Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if the, in making a, I, I would say yes. I don't have any reason not to do that. Um, and and we can get some additional information to you between now and then. Think that we can, it's like it would be added under whatever it is I have. Uh, and the, what it says, I guess this is what I'm saying. Chairperson also can speak for herself, but um, the way agendas are put together is, we get suggestions like this one and the chair and the, and the superintendent make the decision what goes on the agenda. But given the uh, the word that these people have died, I have zero issue putting uh that off. But I think uh hopefully most sides of the consideration will be heard.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board regarding this?
Um, I think, sorry. Oh, sorry, I'm still just thinking. I was like deep in thought and then I was like, wait, wait, go move on. Um, okay, so um I guess then, so when we have a discussion on the agenda, it is a time to have sort of start that conversation and hear what we all sort of are bringing to the table from the people we've talked to, from our own personal experiences. Um, weigh in what Jim has heard in our schools. And then this is the time that we have that discussion. So I guess I, I want to make sure that we're all talking to one another at this time. So sort of feel like um, uh, I'm hoping, I'm wondering if we've had this discussion, like I very much, I think I've heard what Monica, I think I heard, I heard what you said, like you wanna put it on the agenda from the vote. But I'm wondering what, what, uh, if you could tell me more about your thoughts behind it rather than the motion you put out, but like, so where are you coming from? Where do you see, um, clearly you think it's really an important issue and uh sort of the, the thought behind why you think it's an important issue and how you think it supports the education of students here at Winter Grove? And you know the trade offs.
Sure, um, absolutely. So obviously, we've got a lot of parents who care about this. We have parents who have come uh to the meetings, um, have taken time incredibly. Uh, you know, who have put uh together this petition signed by sixty-five people. Um, there may be people who feel that it's not necessary, um, uh, parents, families, and that's horrible for them. Um, but we obviously have a lot of parents who really do. Sure, uh, people can uh get in contact uh with the teachers at any time. They could get in contact with the teachers. They can have parent teacher conferences, so you know, there's nothing to stop that. But these people are like, making an express wish, you know, through the petition um that this occurred. And I think we really need to honor that. So we add another workshop day that was lifted, what kind of work for workshop. And I've been, I've been pushing for it to happen sooner rather than later, because I think that we can make it happen uh this spring and I think that we should. Thank you, Monica.
I, no, I need to ask, you want to put on to add it spring of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
That would cost us a lot of money, wouldn't it? And the, the taxpayers understand that that would be a lot of money if we didn't have this year, because it isn't in our budget.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think anyone stated um that we wanted to have it this year. And I reached out to the touch and he mentioned before Stephen Hatfield asked when the early tickets have happened. And it was this year. And I am just seeing that as part of teacher negotiations and everything like that.
And and just the other, just, just the fact, um, I really don't know my decision or where I swing. I have to take the next two weeks to think about this. But just the fact wise, if we do this, we lose a workshop day. If we add another workshop day, that's more money. That, we're already looking at our budget. It's not looking good. So that's more money. So we're going to lose training that the teachers need um in that time that they can work together. So if we will lose that, um, I'm just saying, I'm not saying parent teacher conferences are bad. At this time, we need to understand that some people will be lost.
Um, sorry. Um, I'm also wondering, I think in the next two weeks, I think that's what, um, that's why I was a little taken aback about the vote. Because I think, I think we have a discussion and my historic knowledge about this is that, like, you have the discussion and then it gives a lot of time for people to think. And then maybe follow up and then somebody makes a motion to have the vote. So there's this like process so we can talk about things and think about things. Because I think when we first hear information, we wanna then think about how that works out and then make a decision with all the information. So I, I've always sort of sensed and I think that you talk about voting after you've had two discussion periods, because I wonder if it's not, like, right now, what we've got set up is the trade off between workshop day and teacher conferences. But who knows, maybe there are other options, but we need to have the time and the resources to look at the calendar, to talk to people, to talk to, you know, where are your concerns and how are there ways that we could incorporate this type of activity? And I think it comes from us talking to one another, having time to think about it, come back and talk again and discuss. Because we all have, um, you know, solutions take longer with more people, but you get better solutions. So we all bring our voices here, talk about it, not with the lens that we're making a decision here now, but that we're having these rich conversations, where we all bring our different points of view. And then we can make a reasoned decision, the best we can make with the information we have.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other comments, Monica?
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, and 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 given um your thoughts on that, I'll read that. Um, what I said in my suggestion, um, I, I sometimes feel very frustrated with the talking, talking, talking and not deciding, although you make very, you make very good comparable points um uh for, for work consideration. Um, and so I see that.
Thank you, Monica. Seeing no more comments, we will close this discussion. And move on to old business. We'll start with our FY twenty-five budget discussion.
Uh, I just wanted to remind you, this is a discussion. Um, but I, I will tell you upfront that one of the things that, um, we have a workshop next week. And um, I'm not going to be able to be here, but I'm, I'm just asking you to think about this at the beginning of this process. Uh, whether after this discussion tonight, whether you even feel that you need to, because um I have set up. So maybe you can have a meeting next week, even with my absence. I'm gonna pass, so these are complete packets, so I'll take them apart. This is David. Monica. Joel. I think. Sorry, what, anything about that? So um, here's gonna be, here's the challenge. I will, uh, in, most of the administrators are here, some of them are still on uh Zoom. The, the hard part for, um, what I, I guess what I wanna say is, I can't tell you how many hours of work has gone into getting this, this place. So if I feel like I'm, I'm um jumping to a place that you're not ready to jump to yet, just please understand that I can't really, and the administrative team can't uh collectively share everything that we've done in hundreds of hours. And I literally mean hundreds of hours putting this budget together. And I will say that um, having this superintendent for a long, long time, um, I've never been faced with it. And I've had two budgets that failed twice, um, in other districts where I've been. And I'm not saying this one's gonna fail. I'm sure hoping it's not. Um, but it, this has been a really, really difficult thing. And I will tell you upfront, one of the things that's, I've had to do um, and I don't think the administrative team is thrilled, and I will take responsibility for this, because this is my decision. Um, is to make some decisions about how to make some cuts based upon historical data. Uh, so I'm gonna try my best to go through this with you all. Uh, so the first thing you have in front of you are the areas, this is not all the areas of increase. But it's the uh, the biggest areas of increases that we have identified. Uh, middle, we, the board gave us a correction at the last workshop. They wanted to support the three teachers at the middle school. They're in there. Uh, we have money in negotiations, which uh really, again, is part of why this isn't public information, is this is private. This is, this is what we're working on. So we can't share your money in negotiations with, with uh public. The, there's a new F M L law that um, we've got some clarification on. It, we initially thought it was gonna cost us eighty thousand, so you're gonna see this show up twice. Forty thousand, forty thousand on the add side and forty thousand on the, on the takeaway side. Debt service, we are, we have new debt services here, all of the things we've done. Um, the boilers, the lighting merchant debt, all of that work that you've been hammering Joel about. Um, now we have to start paying that. It's about a three point two million dollar uh bond. And we start seventeen years payment of that. That's, I think, ninety thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. Um, health insurance increase, no idea at this point, because um, we have still eleven in tow. It's very frustrating. We're being told we're gonna be, or as early as the middle of next week, which would be after workshop. So again, the workshop won't help you. The uh, and we, we budgeted ten percent. That, but that's all you can do is kind of, is kind of guess. Um, it's all based upon, it used to be one rate for every school and the entire school and the entire state. Now it's uh, it depends on your usage and we've had recent empty usage. The only angle that we have been given is that they're gonna cap it at fifteen percent. But I just told you, we budgeted ten. So by the time we meet on the third, we will have that number. We know that for sure. So um, you can see the number I had in here. The chance of it going down is pretty slim. Um, and the chances of it going up is pretty great. The uh, the cost I made for transportation, if you look at something on the street, you're normally gonna say, that's not the whole cost. Um, there is a reason for that. We can talk about it more, but you know, that is, what I want you to know about the transportation cost. Uh, and and Josh has worked really hard with, with uh, particularly with Denise in getting, getting numbers in there um based upon just over a half a year's, it's almost three, four years' experience now. But I can tell you this, it's really important that you all hear this and that the council wants to hear this too. This number, and this is the biggest percentage increase in the entire budget is still less than the R four we have from Northeast Charter for next year. Still less. So it's a lot of money, but it's still less. Uh, those are the major increases. So now I'm gonna take you through the next, uh, the draft, when it says draft budget for post cuts. Um, I asked the administration to go through and, and take a look at their budgets and see if they can find ways to define any amount of money. Any savings is, is good. Um, I got uh a list, I didn't want to list them all, because some, they're pretty, some of them are pretty small. Total of fifty-five thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, so if you read this thing, if you look at the top in, in hole where it says current budget, that's the current budget that I sent out to you guys. That was, that's what we were working from and I had some frustration trying to get a static number. I needed a number to stay still. So we, we knew where we were cutting from. So that's the number we settled on as, as the static number, fourteen million seven hundred thirty thousand, forty sixty-six dollars. So below that, you see the impact of, uh, all, all the way on the far right, the the, what the cuts are, and then it's cumulative. Going down the page, it's cumulative. And you can see in the bill, in the column next to it, is what that takes the budget to. So the first cut is $55,125 with various cuts from the, from the school, primary or the high school. And then there's Julianne, she opened it before. There's a fourth grade teacher in there that's been cut. It's a new position, it's not an existing position. These are additional requests, so no existing positions have been cut. Literacy coach is also in there, it's a request, a new request that has been cut. Well, being proposed to be cut is what I should say. You will vote on the cuts ultimately. Facilities cut, this is, this is gonna take some explanation and I'll try to explain it as ambitiously as I can. But the, there's still a significant amount of money in this year's budget for facilities that has not been spent, is not specifically earmarked to be spent. And the, looking at all kinds of projects, there was more money added in this year's budget, about another half million dollars for projects. So I met with Joel and basically said, what are you spending this $500,000 in FY24 budget on? Because I don't know how we can carry over $500,000 and ask for $500,000 more than that. That doesn't make a lot of sense. And he agreed. So he and I ended up with Denise yesterday. The money that's, that's still in that article this year, there's still some capital improvement money that was set aside by the town council over the last couple of years, it's still there. Not a lot of money, it's 90,000, something like that. And we're anticipating, I mentioned this earlier, we're going to the council on second and ask them to set aside money for buses and set aside some additional money, about $600,000 total between those two things. About 275 will go to buses, another 200, I mean another, whatever the balance is, yeah, it's $225,000. Will go to capital improvement products, projects. So that's that. I'm proposing that cut the superintendent's position to three days a week and realize in net savings there. I am making a proposal in order to, for the board to do that on the second, on the third, sorry, our next meeting, we'll have an executive session to talk about that, because we can't have that conversation specifically about, even though I would let it happen. And I might as well let it happen. But the other one, the next one after there is making a, I'm sorry, skipped over. We're also making a recommendation for administrative cut. And that, that number doesn't look like what you might expect it to, then that again would require an executive session to, because it talks about specific individuals. So that's, there's a $40,000 cut there and then there's a $42,000 cut by cutting my position to three days a week. And then, as I said before, the FMLA reduction went from 80,000 to 40,000, so it's a fragment there. So those total cuts add up to $867,125. That still leaves the budget at 13.863341. Still, I think, much higher than I'm comfortable asking the council and then taxpayers to support. So what's always been an option for superintendents, and I've never used it before, this is the first year I've used it, is to do some historical, take a historical look at the encum, not encum, it's the balances in all of the articles. As you know by state law, no article can be hold. So that's important to know. Because down at the very bottom, skip that middle section just for a second, all the way down to the bottom, that shows you from the audit. So it's not, it's, the audit has verified this. What the balances have been in each of those articles. And you'll note, I didn't include Article 10. Article 11 is Article 10's debt service. Article 11 is the crossing direction. So it's like $7,000. So I didn't put, I didn't include it yet. So if you look down through and I'll take you all the way to the right side of that bottom third, where it says carry forward by article, all the way up to the average. Over the last three years and the projection for this year, so it's two plus the projection for this year, there's been an average of $210,000 leftover in Article 1. Article 2, 151, Article 4. For those who don't know, we have Article 3, because that's CACD. Article 4, 8,471. Article 5, 1,000. Article 6, 26,000. Article 7 has a negative balance over, over the three year average, but you can see that we really had one year of negative balance. And Article 8, same thing, has a negative balance. And Article 9 has about $100,000. So looking at, so if you look at the very bottom, all those articles added up, on average, we have carried over about $640,000, 641, so 640,298. So the real question is then, does it make sense for us to ask for some significant increases from the taxpayers when we know we've been carried over over half a million dollars each of the last three years? And I think the answer usually is yes. It does make sense, because you can, you're permitted to stay within 3% or way, if you carry over way more than 3%, the bar has now gone up to, I don't know, 5% to 9%, whatever. And that would be okay. That would be permissible by the state's guidance. However, looking for a place, when we really can't find other places where we can make cuts to our budget, if we go back up to the middle section now, I'm projecting that, I'm suggesting that we take $100,000 out of Article 1. We take $20,000 out of Article 2. We take $75,000 out of Article 5. And we take $10,000 out of Article 6. $25,000 out of Article 7. $75,000 out of Article 8, nothing out of Article 9. So follow that logic, then you go to the next paper. This is the one that gets published to the community in entirety. This is the, and I qualify as, we're literally writing a law on it. So, but the numbers that you need to see are the next to the last column. The one that's kind of colored, oh, actually, it's the next one that has that column. Yeah, these are maybe a little hard to read. I'll try to help you, if you can, if you can. So the number we're shooting for, should have pointed that out on the last sheet, now new FY25 proposed budget is $13,558,341. That's an $808,000 increase. It represents 6.34%. Remember, we started at 15.5%. So I think the administrators have done an amazing job of getting it to this point. That's just for Articles 1 through 11. So those numbers are plugged in to 2425. You can see that there's the Article 1 is projecting a $233,000 increase for next year, just under 5%. Article 2, special ed is 1.3, it's a small increase. Article 4, other instruction, a 1.44% is a $7,000 increase. Article 5, student staff support is, it actually shows a reduction. That's where one of those positions that are proposing to cut, proposing you to cut is in there. So that's actually a reduction of 0.53%. School administration, that's where, I'm sorry, assistant administration is where I will be coming out of my cut. But if you combine it, that shows an actual reduction for assistant administration. The school administration, it actually shows an increase of several percent. And transportation is up 242,562. That's why back here I showed you only 200,000. It's because that number's kind of changing, kind of fluctuating. And it shows that it's up 41.92%, but I'm gonna say it again, because it's really important. That number is still less than what Northeast Charter was charged us if we stayed with that. And I think overall, you know, buying three buses during the course of the year and we're getting reimbursements. So that line's gonna be over, but I think we've actually initiated quite well. Facility maintenance, I just share with you what is happening there so that we, this one says $1, but then I'll have to go fix that. We actually have the entire increase, so there's no increase there, no decrease even. Debt service is what I was talking about. Before this year, we had $118,000 in debt. Next year it's 314,000. It's an increase of $196,000. It shows 165%. That's a huge percentage increase, but the, you know, the numbers are, the numbers what they are. And we are adding $129 to the stipend for the crossing direction. That's up by 0.94. So that takes the total for the top 11, it's 6.35%. As I mentioned earlier, partial misassistance, 0.34, but some of it has to do with how we're around. So the next two, the next section talks about the two we refer to as enterprise accounts. Those are, our responsibility is the school, but they really are intended to operate as funding agencies on their own. That's why you don't see a number for them. All you see is what the taxpayers, I think there's maybe 10 school systems in the entire state of Maine that operate their food services in the block. All the rest of them are running the red. All the rest of them have been superintendent in five different school systems. All five of them have money from the town to make their program whole. Same thing is true for adult debt. Theoretically speaking, adult debt, charge fees, workforces and stuff like that, they don't raise enough money to be self-sustaining, but they're in line. So the town is going to be asked for $58,000. Last year was 56, so it's up 2,000. School nutrition program, you heard Samantha speak earlier this year that we had to, we actually were excited and had to send her out shopping, buy new equipment, to spend down some of the money, because we were carrying too much forward. So we're at, still has to be $400,000 for that program. That was a number that changed after I had with Denise yesterday. So that's $75,000 less from the taxpayers. So when you put those two numbers together with the top half, the budget is up $736,116, which is a 5.67%. So we got it under 6%, which wasn't specifically our goal. We kind of pulled on what we could. The next section below is the revenue side. That full top section is what I would call the spender's side. The bottom section is revenues. And you can see the state share of the 279, ED279, we averaged $191,000, almost $92,000 more from the state this year. Some of that has to do with we got our first reimbursement for the buses. So I would hope we're gonna get more money from the state, at least because of that, over the next three or four years. We no longer have any state issued debt service, so that's why there's nothing there. Tuition, we, you know, we anticipate, we get, our tuition students come from one town. We anticipate that being stable, so that's still there. Main care, we, I talked to Sue, we're not gonna get that money this year. We're not gonna raise it that much. So we're cutting like $25,000. Gate receipts is, I always thought we got more money for gate receipts, but Joel, yeah, she said. So we've got, I said, well, what about this, what about that? And so we went through and he's right. And historically, if you look, it's right. And I guess I'd rather be low on the revenue guesting side than to be over and be short on revenues. This lineage revenue, this one goes up and down, up and down, up and down. I'm anticipating with some different things going on, that we're gonna get some additional revenue, this lineage revenue. But I don't, I can't name the sources right now, because they have made decisions. So I'm hoping that we'll get $10,000 more in this lineage revenue next year. That's usually the place where we get, we take in more money than we project. It's not a bad thing. Fund transfer, that's in yellow, only because I had not put that in there. But remember, we received an involved renovation grant, that's what gave the parking lot on the side of the great school and parking lot by the new sports office. I forgot to put that in there, that's a transfer. I thought it was a one-time transfer, but again, meeting with Denise, no, we have to, we have that money set aside and we have to transfer it. Here's the part that she and I, that she actually changed my mind on and I'm glad she did. The last year we carried over, we designated $275,000 to carry over for the year, for the year of right now. Initially, looking at all this, I had put $375,000 and she said, I think that's too big of a risk. And I'm not sure, we're gonna have $375,000 left over at the end of fiscal year '25. So we just talked about instead, we're gonna go with 325. So put all that together, we have an increase in revenues of $226,807.43. So when you put all that together, the net impact of the taxpayers is a 6.61% increase of $509,000. This is a 309. So it's been a labor of love. So one last thing to share with you. This is real, this is a, this is putting all, I can share with you in three different graphs, you have to get to the bottom line. The very top is what I sent out to you a long, long time ago. If you look, if you look, third column, 2025 proposed down to the bottom, That's what I referred to as our request budget. That had all those positions that we talked about in there. What I should have done, I should have the other cuts first, but I didn't, it doesn't matter, because it's the same place. The second graph shows what it looks like when we take off the historical effects, $100,000 in Article 1 and all the way through. That takes it from a 15.4% increase down to a 13.14% increase. And then the last one in the very bottom shows what happens when you, and it shows you all the cuts, the high school various, the fourth grade teacher, the FMLA cuts, it totaled $180,000. The literacy coach reduced the superintendent to 1.6. The tech coordinator. And the basically total cut of everything from facilities. And that takes you to the 6.35% at the bottom. I just summarized a little bit of the differential period there.
Thank you, Jim, for all that explanation.
Might be.
And you should be mentors as well, for your work on this budget. Does the board have any questions? Tim?
Just a question for grade school. Without that fourth grade teacher, is that gonna push up the class size?
No, it's not.
I know, but it's just that it was projected, my guess is projected third grade coming out.
So, yes, they're going, because we have four third grade classrooms, fifteen more to kick, so they'll be now brought down to three classrooms. But Debbie and I were talking about a different plan today, which I prefer not to get right at this moment. So it may look different than the fourth grade classroom.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for all of this hard work, everybody. I'm interested to hear what you've come up with that during another budget session. I was sad to see the idea of adding a literacy coach. And I understand the importance of that in elementary school. So that might be, ultimately, something that I'll probably be advocating for. But thank you, everybody, for the hard work.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Catherine?
I'm sorry, I stepped out in an opportune moment.
Um, I think I caught on what you were speaking about. Did anybody talk about, um, how we feel about a superintendent? Um, did that come along?
No, what I said was that's, that's, that, that and the techno, the administrative personnel really, um, discussions for executive session.
Okay, um, you can tell me if I can and can't speak about this, but the idea of, of making a change. And the two days versus one day, like, I just, okay, is that all still executive sessions, uh, session? Are details about it executive session or?
Well, I can answer that one. I mean, I, I, uh, I, I guess I just looked at, at this and, and kind of where I am personally. Um, and I feel very confident that I can do the job, um, in three days. But I will say in, in full disclosure that if I'm not doing this job next year, you're going to probably need to be returned full time.
I guess that'll be for further conversation to see if we can do that.
Thank you. Does the board have more questions or comments? Go to Jim. Okay, we'll close that discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
What? I, so I just need to know, do you want to continue to have the meeting, the workshop next week or not have the workshop? I would suggest not.
Where does the board feel? Do we want to do a show though? Or?
I, I, I don't think it's necessary. I think we have all the information here. Um, during, during the executive meeting, most likely next school board meetings, we'll have that discussion then.
Thank you, Cam. And then, Monica?
Um, I am for having, uh, the meeting next week. I know that there are, uh, parents, um, who, uh, expressed a desire, uh, to come and be that part of the plans. And I think that we ought to give them the opportunity, plus I don't feel like we've really nailed down the details. I would love to hear what Joe and Debbie have been talking about, and then I also want to give an opportunity to talk about the literacy specialists. See if we can put that back in there. I think there's still some work that needs to be done, maybe not a lot, but certainly does represent.
Thank you, Monica. I think.
Um, maybe since Jim isn't going to be here, maybe we can switch it for another time. Um, I am either or. I'm looking at all the others tonight, um, and all the different changes. I mean, I know I'd like to have some time to run through this, um, and maybe reach out to people and get a little bit more information. Um, so maybe if we don't have it next week, if maybe we can add it in somewhere else so that we can still kind of go over everything and Jim can be present to answer questions.
Yeah, um, I think that's a great suggestion because I, I'm not sure we need to reschedule the workshop, but this, uh, the budget will be on here for discussions ideally. I mean, I looked at, we didn't vote on the budget until the first or second meeting in April last year, so we need to get on. We're, we're not in a big hurry. We, we have to go to the council on the second, but if we won't have a budget, we didn't have a budget last year when we went to the council. Uh, we can continue to have some conversations here about the plan, discuss what you might want to add in, what you don't, you know. I just wanted to give you all of that, but this will be discussed. Um, and we'll have the same thing like the parent teacher conference, um, this spring conference in tonight. When we're at a point where we feel like we don't need to discuss this anymore, we're ready to move forward, then the next meeting we'll vote on.
Okay.
Um, so then I would just say, for the extra pool, it sounds like we have ample time in our schedule of meetings. They already have our original meeting, so I would like to just give it time to think about it and to read through, you know, uh, some pretty significant information and then come back at the next meeting and continue our conversation. Our next round of the list.
Okay, and did you, yes, just click on the. Okay. Um, for myself, I, I can go with the way, I'll tell Strong, we got it, I guess, in, um, tiebreaker, technically, so, um, let's just stick with our regular scheduled meetings, I think. And then definitely waste time over the next week to look at this information and come up with our questions. Okay, moving on from our budget discussion to, uh,
Wait, one minute.
Yeah, just go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I, I write myself notes, write a number of statements. I don't believe you got a job with that, but. I, I just want to, I've said it a number of times, but I want to be specific in saying, our meeting is at 6 o'clock with the town council on April 2nd, Tuesday, April 2nd. We normally meet on Mondays, so it's Tuesday, April 2nd, 6 o'clock. It would be just really great if everybody could be there.
And is N I, N H S at 7? You're right.
It's at 6. I wrote that.
I wrote it sometime.
Yep.
That happened last year too, and this, the, uh, I wonder if I can talk to Anthony about putting us later on the agenda. Cause he, he said, well, this last one of an hour.
That was my question to you, actually.
I'll check.
Okay, thank you. Um, Monica, can I ask anything?
I just wanted to have, I have a question. So that, that council meeting, that's where we're going to be talking about, um, getting the money up for the buses? And you said there was something else also that we were going to be talking about?
Yeah, bus, I'm going to ask for six, I already sent in the request. I just sent that in advance. $600,000 from undesigned money, um, that we've started in the audit. Um, 600,375 will cost money will be for the three buses and 225 will go to county officials.
Just clarifying with my own, uh, are we doing the meeting next week with Megan? Okay, thank you. That was my thought. Okay, moving on to old business, 5.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Widdrop Public Schools 2024, 2025 school calendar.
So.
Second. Do we want to have a discussion?
Yeah, just quick comment. Um, since we are going to have a discussion and a vote, um, with those spring conferences, that could alter the calendar, so I don't know if we want to hold voting on this right now.
We could start with that, but I thought it was my understanding that we would not move to cha, oh wait, because it's 2024. Yeah, got it. I hear you. Yeah, kind of.
That's what I was going to say yet. I think, I wonder if we could, um, postpone this, what, if there's a table, if we could table it for another time. Okay?
Okay, folks.
Okay, so the new.
We have this, it's me asking, did you move it, you signed it?
Yes.
So the new, I'll entertain a new motion to table the vote for the Windsor Public Schools 2024 through 2025 school conference.
So.
Second. All of you? You're interested? Thank you. There is no new business. We'll go ahead and open up for public comment if there are additional type of comments.
Hey, there, this is tonight, and I know you guys, thanks for coming up for, okay, here's.
Please, David.
Yes, so again, I'm Erin Starks. Um, I know that this is not a time for open dialogue with board, so I am going to make a few statements that are phrased in the form of a question with not expecting any answer.
Okay.
Um, okay, so one of the questions I wrote down, trying to read my chicken scratch. Um, I just wanted to point out that the parent teacher conferences are always optional for, for parents to sign up. Um, by no means are you required to do that. So if there are parents that don't want that, they can opt out. Um, I'm interested in seeing the numbers from each of the school from the survey that was taken. Um, from the elementary, middle and high school where those numbers landed on vote. Um, for being in favor of removing parent teacher conferences. Um, I was also in contact with a teacher, I'm not going to name any names, but, um, the, um, suggestion was that you move the time of the spring conferences. Um, January might be a suggestion, seeing that testing has just been done. It would be a great time to review testing and other, um, academic work. Um, has the climate changed in regards to parent teacher conference? Um, I just want to restate that I understand that the board made this decision based on surveying teachers. Um, no matter what that result would have been, with parent voice involved, I think it's really important that we understand that the parents' voices were not included before the decision was made. Um, even if the decision were to end the same, I think it's really, um, powerful to give that, um, opportunity for parents to have their voice heard. Um, no one's saying that it's simple, um, but if this is something that we value, why should we not make it happen and find the time and money to, um, go forward with this? Um, and then face-to-face, um, interaction with our staff, our school staff, um, teachers and administration is, should be a, a very, it should be valued 100%. Um, any opportunity to have that face-to-face interaction should, should be welcomed. Um, what are the costs that it would entail to put parent teacher conferences back into the schedule? Would it be cheaper or more affordable, I'll say, um, to pay our teachers that are doing it on their own, out of their own time, to pay them individually for the time that they're putting in? Um, or would it be cheaper just to put it back in the schedule, um, the way that it used to be? Um, and then I'm just, again, I, I, you know, the surveys of teachers was in 2022. Do we feel that it's different? Has the climate changed? So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much, Erin.
And I'm going to read as well. Um, all the area schools have spring conferences on, we're in, in Cape Town, in the East Coast, then, Lewiston, Coney, Oak Hill, yes, if you go with the, we don't have them, if you go for them, they do have them. Um, parents that I know, we use conferences as a time to find out where children are having academic difficulty. And then that's what we work on over the summer, so that when our kids come back, they're where they should be. They have a lost round. They are not, they need to go into special services, so I feel like, um, you know, it gets thrown around, parents are their first teachers. Well, you know, give us, give us some information so that we can work on whatever the kids need to work on. And something else to think of is, um, you know, behavior. Like I too had a child, and that was my first question when I was at a conference was, how do they behave in the classroom? You know, I want to ask about social life, one, I asked about academic, and one, I asked about behavior. So I'm hearing that there's a lot of concerns about behavior at all three levels. Um, I mean, I was, I had a child who I was like, give them those teachers without eyes in the back of their head so that they could be keeping them in line. And then when they got to middle school, when they got to high school, you know, because they had had such a structured environment, they, you know, didn't end, end up in juvenile hall, you know? So I just feel like it's really important to have all these discussions, social behavior, academic, that you don't see them for a part.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments. Any more, uh, public comments on Zoom or in the room? Okay, we'll close our public comment section and request if there are any items this board would like to add to future agendas. Monica?
Uh, yes, uh, before I have, I just want to thank you so much, Erin and Jennifer, for your involvement. Um, thank you very much. I appreciate it and, and makes my job more rewarding, and I know what our community wants. Uh, yeah, so we overlooked adding to the agenda, um, my suggestion from last meeting. Um, and I would like that, I'd like it to get on the agenda for next meeting, please. And that is that we look at the ways in which we currently communicate with parents and, uh, talk about what some better ways might be.
Thank you, Monica. Any of us from the board have any suggestions for future agenda items? Okay. Moving on to our school board comments.
Okay. Um, I have a comment. Um, I wanted to share and thank everybody last week for letting me participate. Right as we, um, put up a bit, I really appreciate your generosity to that. Um, and I've had some kind of things since then and, um, I mean, I had an idea about how to sort of frame what we do and what we do here. And I think it might be something big, but and then I could break down my thoughts a little bit on that, so it's not. Um, so one of the things I thought about as just something we could consider is that, um, Wednesday nights, what day, first, third, uh, Wednesday, first month, is a time for us to look forward to talking to one another. So that this is a meeting of the five of us with Jim as secretary in public. And that we look forward to talking to him, you know, looking at each other as we're talking to sort of get feedback from wherever people are coming into our conversation and what thoughts they've had, who they've spoken to, the parents that have reached out to them, community members. And so that we think about our Wednesday night and frame that as a time that we actually get to talk to one another because we do have these rules about how we do communicate with one another. So thinking about Wednesday as a time that we're talking to each other, rather than talking to parents or talking to administrators or, you know, talking out there, but it's the time we've got a horseshoe here and we can really rely on making eye contact with one another and, you know, we can show a one point of view. And so in that, um, so writing down some words that are, um, so, um, that we function well together as a team. We really are a team. We sign up and doing this together, we work together. We come from different perspectives. We all have our different minds. And that when we take action on a matter, that the, after we've had that cha, uh, an opportunity to review the pertinent information, hear appropriate input, so hear those people. And then what's so important is this, discuss the matter fully at a whole meeting. That we're talking about it here. We're not talking about it with the administrators, we're not talking about the teacher, we're not talking about the parents. That we are talking about it here. Um, it is important for the board members to respect each other's opinions and to understand that there are many right ways to serve the community and the students' interests. And we all bring a very important perspective to the conversation and that we can all work together. But I just thought that idea of like, the thinking that, oh, tonight I'm coming in here to talk to you guys, to hear what you say. So we'll better than that. Something I thought of. Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other board comments?
Uh, yes.
Oh. Oh, we, I don't know my school rules, so it may not be appropriate to share it as well.
Go ahead.
Um, I want to say this again. Uh, April 13th, 9:00 AM, uh, dinner at 15:00, last of 2024, right there. Um, I brought 10 of these here, enough for everybody at the table to sign up. I can stay after to help you sign up. Anybody in the community, anybody out there, sign up. I will help you. Uh, so it's, it's good class and it's, and it's healthy and we all can hang out in different, different setting. So hope to see everybody there.
Thank you very much, Tim. Any other school board comments? And that we're not supposed to say that, um, I, I just want to thank you for that, Catherine, that, that is a lesson that is very helpful. It's a focus. It's very helpful for me. Thank you. Okay, comments from our school board of representatives? David?
Um, a lot of fun stuff for our high school, as it is March Madness week, which is why I have the Loxie hat on. Um, just have a little fun. But anyway, so March Madness has been wicked fun this year as it always is. Senior still out of the league, so I'm happy about that. You just have like a game, Joseph. So hallway decoration was Tuesday night. That was chaotically interesting, to say the least. Um, pitchers and catchers for both baseball and softball started this week and all the other spring sports start next Monday, the 25th. Um, big March Madness day Friday day for all of all students. Can they even have staff teams this year? Thank you for mentioning the pitter patter. Please help my class. We are small but mighty. And one act were recently. Those went well, from what I've heard. I don't know if Joseph has any more information on those, so I will defer to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Joseph?
I don't have too much more information about the one act, but I would just refer that I'm sure our students are great at the one. I've heard a lot about it and I've heard it really well. And yeah, March Madness has gone great so far. Obviously, we just do it to see which falls off. I think March Madness dance tomorrow, so you have to be very happy to set up. And then, of course, the activities on Friday are going to be very enjoyable this week. Oh, yes, the humane singers came to visit us in the past, we yourself. And it's really, it's turned a lot of good things. I was there and enjoyed them. Yes, probably our four different departments. There's been DJ committees being formed to create music playlists. There's been cross, uh, top class officers. I know me and David are being soon to discuss whether we want to do a crawl.
Thank you, Joseph. Without seeing any more comments from the board, go ahead and close that section. And there is no executive session today. So without objection, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight thirty-two.